Good afternoon, we have a quorum. So we'll start the special finance committee meeting now. The meeting will be divided into two sessions and it will conclude at six P M. The purpose of the special meeting is to examine the estimates of expenditure of twenty twenty three to twenty four to ensure the provision sought is no more than that is necessary for the execution of the approved policies. All your questions must be directly related to the estimates of expenditure. If you would like to follow up on the government's written reply, please quote the reply number on the upper right corner such as L W B bracket W zero zero one. If members cannot follow up on the government's written reply, you can provide supplementary questions in writing and hand them to the secretary before today's meeting, uh before the conclusion of today's meeting. Uh now it is the session on welfare, poverty alleviation and children. Welcome Secretary for Labor and Welfare and his team. Members who wish to speak, please press the button. Secretary, opening remarks please. Thank you Chair. Honorable members, I will now spend a few minutes on some salient points. First, on expenditure on social welfare in twenty twenty three to twenty four. Government's recurrent spending is one hundred and twenty one billion dollars, accounting for twenty one point six percent of the total recurrent government expenditure. That is more than uh twenty percent, so it is the majority of the, it is. This shows that it is the government's commitment to uh support the elderly. Elderly services has always been one of our priorities. And in twenty twenty three to twenty four, the expenditure on elderly services is estimated to be about fifteen million billion dollars. There are three salient points regarding elderly services. They are money, land and manpower. We have spent enough resources on it and we have reserved five percent of public housing facilities on elderly services. And within this year, we expect to have an extra twenty two hundred subsidized residential care places for the elderly this year. As for manpower, we are concerned about the provision of nurses. In the coming five years, there will be an additional seventeen hundred students to enroll in enrolled nurse training. Upon completion of their studies, they have to uh serve for no less than three years after graduation. This is to address the manpower shortage. Second, we have regularized the community care service voucher scheme for the elderly from eight thousand a person to twelve thousand in twenty twenty five to twenty six. And the government will set up sixteen new neighborhood elderly centers in the next five years. Now for larger scale uh district elderly community centers and neighborhood elderly centers, we currently have two hundred and thirteen of these centers and will gradually increase their number. And for the integrated discharge support program for elderly patients will increase the number of beneficiaries beneficiaries from thirty three thousand to forty five thousand. And some eleven thousand patients can be referred to receive home support services. In terms of cash support, starting from September last year, we have merged the normal and higher old age living allowance. And starting from the third quarter this year, we relaxed the absence limit, another pre-application one year continuous residence requirement of the social security allowance scheme. This will certainly help the elderly. And this year, in terms of cash support, counting social security allowance scheme and the C S S A. The number is a seventy five point four billion dollars. And I would like to talk about enhancing preschool rehabilitation services. I'm sure you're aware that we have stepped up onsite preschool rehabilitation services. And we have also launched the pilot project on tier one support services. The services target children who are not yet assessed by child assessment centers. We have regularized the tier one support services and we will consolidate the existing resources to integrate it with the existing onsite preschool rehabilitation services. So that we want to provide suitable assistance and treatment that the these children need as early as possible so that they can study in mainstream schools as far as possible. As for targeted poverty alleviation, the New Term Commission on Poverty has been set up. And very soon we will take forward the mandatory reporting mechanism of child abuse cases to logical. And the review of the residential childcare and related services have been completed. Phase one is on child children age below six, second phase is children age above six. So that's all from me for now, Chair. Thank you, Mrs. Sun. Now there are thirteen members wishing to speak. We have plenty of time, but I would like for members to stick to the five minute limit. If there is time, then we can speak for the second round. Uh Doctor Take Chiu Yun, Mister Michael Tian, Doctor Chow Man Kwan, Mister Chan Pu Lan, Miss Yong He Yan, Doctor Ah Man Yu, Doctor So Chuan Wen, Mister Lam Ching Sing, Mister Chow Si Chong, Mister Tony Che, Mister Lei Tong Kuo, Miss Maggie Chen and Mister Gary Zhang. First, Doctor Take Chiu Yun, thank you. I would like to follow up on my question that is zero one seven regarding poverty alleviation. First, Secretary, Under Secretary, Permanent Secretary and Director, we can see that in the past few months, we can see that you have actually put in some hard work. So my question was what a kind of plans do you have in place regarding poverty alleviation? And the reply was that the Commission on Poverty has been reorganized and there was a strife and rights program. For the new term government, it has been formed for over ten months. And in his policy address, the chief executive has mentioned targeted poverty alleviation. But in the reply, I couldn't see any concrete targets. I don't see a single cent spent on the poverty alleviation front in the budget. So I would like to know, Secretary, what are you considering regarding poverty alleviation? What kind of goals do you have? And can you let families living in poverty know? When will there be concrete measures helping them? What are you thinking? Actually, we are deeply disappointed with your reply. Thank you, Mister Sun. Thank you for your question. Targeted poverty alleviation is one of our priorities and the poverty on com- uh poverty, the Commission on Poverty has been formed for about a quarter and a general meeting has been held. And there are a few targets under targeted poverty alleviation. First, we have to identify any target uh group. First, we have the Strive and Rise Program targeted to young people, particularly those living in subdivided units. Of course, people living in subdivided units are one of our major targets. There are some two hundred thousand people living in S D U's. The Strive and Rise Program is helping those young people. And we have some seventy two thousand single parent family. And we also want to assist women with employment potential such as by providing childcare, et cetera. And now we are living in an aging society. The elderly are of course receiving different types of assistance from the government. But for uh elderly people living alone or in two person household where they are both elderly people, we can't just give them money. We've given uh some seventy five billion dollars in terms of welfare. How are we going to assist different target groups? From the Commission on Poverty, they can pass projects using the community care fund. But actually, not only government resources, actually, there are many private companies or those from the private centers who wish to help us as well. This is our common target. I hope that on different occasions I can explain this further. Chair, I have left plenty of time for Mister Sun to tell us more about the poverty alleviation measures. But after hearing his reply, there is still no plan, no budget and no ideas at all. I would like to state for the record that I find it very disappointing. Poverty alleviation has been around for plenty of years. And during his election campaign, the chief executive has put such great emphasis on poverty alleviation. I hope that you can hear the voices of those living in poverty. Please roll out your projects as soon as possible so we have something to look forward to. Thank you. Next, Mister Michael Tian, thank you. I would like to follow up on reply one six eight. Secretary, for the residential care homes for children with special services from twenty twenty, twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two, there were eighty six inspections, but only three written recommendations, warning or directions for remedial measures were issued from the children's home. There were two hundred uh child, two hundred charges laid for the case. The organization behind the group home should be held accountable, but how about government officials? I haven't get, I haven't been given any concrete answer. Can you tell us or give us a fair answer? That the S W D has only issued three warnings. But just for this one single case, two hundred cases, uh two hundred charges were laid. So I would like to know who should be held accountable. I understand that there is an accountability system for civil servants. So in this case, was anyone uh held accountable for this, for the case regarding children's residential home? Thank you. During the first phase of the children of a review of children care home, it has focused on guidelines or the changes in guidelines. Civil servants work according to a system from phase one of the review. And with the experience of children's residential home, I understand that the guidelines have been changed. Let's say for the CCTV footages or surprise inspection. Other than those done by us, this will also be done by justices of the peace and other organizations. Civil servants will have to fulfill their duty according to the prevailing guidelines.
What about those who formulated those guidelines? Should they be held accountable? Well, the directions were made up based on known information. What happened at the children's residential home run by the Hong Kong Society for Protection Children was not something we like to see. Now, we have to work on some basis and inspection of residential care homes for the children. We have our established rules and after the case referred to by the member, we've changed our guidelines. We always want to do the best we can with information we have at hand. I still have one minute, right? Yes, please go on. So according to the secretary, civil servants would only work according to guidelines. And so uh the number of uh inspections laid down in the guidelines and whatever should be done in the guidelines has been done and that's it. What about those who formulated the guidelines? When you visit such a place where children cannot talk yet and even when justice of peace visited prisons, not many prisoners dared to talk to us. So children don't know how to talk yet and what are they expected to see? And they should randomly check some of the CCTV recordings. Hang on please, Mister Tian. Please speak into the microphone. Mister Dr. Fei Lam, I can't hear what you said. Chairman, should we be asking questions related to the draft estimates and not a matter of administration? Yes, but then uh Mister Tian is asking a question, a follow up question of his reply, so I um do allow such questions. Please go on, Mister Tian. May I? Yes, please. You have spent so much money on formulating guidelines and we employ civil servants to carry out the guidelines. Money must be spent properly. If those who formulated the guidelines did not have common sense, now the client's concern could not complain because they could not talk, there was no one uh to tell. So if we are to spend so much money on employing people, how can we be confident that they can help? Any response, please, Secretary? I thank Mister Tian for his reminder. Everyone in public service wants to do his best. Given the new situation, we have to face up to the reality and do our work well. I have to stress that I believe most civil servants are diligent. They want to do their discharge their duties properly to help the public. Thank you, Mister, uh Doctor Chow Man Kwan. Thank you. Secretary, I'd like to follow up on question one three O and one seven one. One three O is a very meaningful question asked by uh Mister Lee Se Wing about uh the number of subvention received by N G Os. Now, uh we understand from the main reply that the money is twenty one point seven billion dollars, billion dollars, and I have got a very detailed table. Now we are concerned about this. It was mentioned by Mister uh Chen Chung Nay uh for patriotic organizations. How much did they get? Now, according to the information set out here, only nine out of the hundred sixty nine and zero from A F C D and youth organizations are lim- very limited. For the first four organizations, they received over one billion dollars and uh the the one got one point eight billion dollars, the largest amount. Now, these organizations are only receiving subvention under social welfare. Some uh are also getting funding under education, if my understanding is correct. And I'd like to know the basis for granting subvention. And what about the unspent balance? Will it be clawed back to the government? And the third question is, in the education sector, we are implementing or implementing measures to safeguard national security. I'd like to know the progress in the welfare sector. Thank you. Uh perhaps uh the director can supplement later. We provide subvention to N G Os under alumsome grant system. It has been in place for a long time. Now, many of them have served Hong Kong for a long time and they uh have very clear terms set out. Their obligations are clearly set out and when there is a new service up for bidding, we have a competitive arrangement. In the coming five years, we have another sixteen neighborhood elderly care centers and they are up for bidding for patriotic organizations and also organizations which love the Hong Kong. We encourage them to take forward to bid for such services. We very much hope that they can participate. And uh we have very strict requirements on national security matters. The director can supplement. We have included the requirements to safeguard national security in our service agreement framework. They can only keep up to twenty five percent of the subvention. The surplus has to be returned to the S W D. That's the uh rough framework, perhaps uh the P S can supplement. Thank you. Or rather, the director can supplement, Miss Shemeng Li. As said by the chair, uh by the secretary, we have included in the service agreement the requirement to safeguard national security. That includes old and I mean that includes new service agreements. When uh the existing agreements are up for renewal, we will also include that requirements. I'd like to talk about the clawback arrangement. Under alumsome grant system, if the uh operating expense eh if the surplus or the unspent balance is less than twenty five percent of the subvention, then the organization gets to keep it. But if it is over twenty five percent, then the money must be clawed back to the administration. Can we require or can we afford, can we uh remind organizations that this money comes from the administration rather than from their own org- organization? This is important. Members of the public have to understand how much the S L government has done for the community. You should step up publicity in this regard. Secretary, thank you. Doctor Chow made a very good point. It's not just for N G Os to impress this point, so should the government. Thank you. Mister Chan Pu Lan, thank you. My question relates to O O one, that is my own question. I'd like to ask about the Shine Skills Center, providing training, vocational training for people with disabilities who are over fifteen years old. I'd like to ask about their employment situation after training. According to the reply, upon completion of training, about thirty percent of them could go to open employment in recent years. So I'd like to ask the administration whether it has measures to boost the open employment rate of the graduates. Because after training, we very much hope that they can be self reliant. And that will also be additional manpower for the community as well. So would the government take the lead to employ more graduates from these centers? And will there be policy incentives to encourage the business sector to employ graduates with disabilities? That's my first question. And the second question is O four three, also my own question. Uh that is about the average waiting time for subsidized residential care services. According to the reply, the average waiting time range from sixteen to eighteen months and eighteen thousand persons are on the waiting list. It is said that from now to end twenty twenty seven, there will be an additional sixty two hundred subsidized residential care places. Or even if the number of applicants do not rise, you can only cater for half of the people on the waiting list, given that there are eighteen thousand of them waiting. How can you fill this big service gap? Will you think of plans such as under the enhanced board place scheme? Expand the scheme to cities in the G B A. Will you procure places in the G B A in order to address this problem? Mister Xun, thank you. I will take the first question or the second question first. Residential care places, as you can see, the government has devoted great efforts to increase the number of subsidized R O C S places to cope with the aging population. In the coming five years, we expect that another sixty two hundred places can be made available. But the calculation is not as simple as that. In fact, most of the places come from turnover of the current institutions. Perhaps some elderly persons have passed away, some have decided to move away from these houses. So the total number available should be over sixty two hundred, but this is a dynamic situation. Every year we have new elderly persons adding to the list, so is in a flux. The government will do its utmost to increase the number of places. And the coming years will we have some major initiatives. Five percent of newly built P R H estates will be for welfare users and many of uh the projects will be for residential care homes. Mister Chan asked whether we will think of buying places from G B A. Well, that is one possibility. In order to maximize resources in the G B A, we've already got two, one in Shih uh Chaoqing, one in Shenzhen. But there aren't too many elders willing to take up the places because they have to choose it from their own initiative. They don't have to pay a single dollar if they go for these places, but not uh the scheme is not very well received. We will do more to encourage our elders. And if they so wish, they can go to a care home in G B A. But the mainstay will still be local residential care homes. Most elderly persons would want to stay in Hong Kong. And it's not that elders would accept any place offered. Now, they would like to uh stay in their current district or they have a few care homes of their choice. It is a very complicated, dynamic balance. We will do more. Hopefully, with more places, we can help our elderly persons. What about the Shine Skills Centers? Of course, we want persons with disabilities to go into open employment, to be self reliant. But it all depends on their capabilities. On the other hand, the government offers facilitation and employment of disabled persons in the business sector in particular because of the manpower crunch. We hope that persons with disabilities can find a job as soon as possible. We will work hard to do this end.
Next, Miss Yong He Yan, who I would like to have follow up questions regarding zero four two and zero one O on cross generational poverty. On zero one zero on children development fund. In twenty thirteen, twenty seventeen and twenty twenty consultancy studies have been conducted. I would like to know, how does the Child Development Fund help with the inter-generation poverty? In your reply, you haven't really followed up on its effectiveness. Perhaps you can answer this question first. Secretary? Perhaps I'll invite the permanent secretary to answer. Miss Lau? Thank you for your question. On Children Development Fund, it has been around for a while. And it is different from the Strive and Rise Project, which is new. But they do have some common features. They target young people, especially those in primary or secondary schools. We want to help them to build positive values. But their scopes are different. For Children Development Fund, they target children in primary four to secondary four. And as you have observed, after the launch of the Children Development Fund, there were three follow-up studies. The results show that for the participating students, relevant stakeholders, or the students' parents and teachers, they can see that the fund has helped the children in building their self-confidence, life planning, and their financial planning. On these fronts, the project has been effective. Compared with the Strive and Rise Project, which is targeted at solving inter-generation poverty, there is a difference because of the new program. It targeted, it targets junior secondary students, especially those living in subdivided units. So in terms of curriculum design, we provide diverse activities or more technical activities. So it has been categorized in part of our poverty alleviation effort. So it has a more direct connection with solving inter-generation poverty. Well, actually, I was looking for K P I. What does it mean to help them so that they can get rid of inter-generation poverty? Of course, we know that there are different activities, such as matching schemes between students and teachers. Of course, these are helpful. But can they actually help them get out of poverty? Next, I would like to follow up on question two three oh. I can see that there is a table provided. In the reply, in twenty twenty-three, number of beneficiaries is ten thousand and subsidies is about four hundred million. And it is expected that in twenty twenty-five to twenty-six, number of beneficiaries will be twelve thousand. Subsidies will be eight hundred million. So I would like to know, the difference in the number of beneficiaries is only two thousand. How come the subsidy is doubled? Are we expecting an increasing cost? Secretary? I'll invite the permanent secretary to answer. Perhaps this is just a matter of time. Miss Lau? Uh. Am I correct to understand you're talking about zero two zero? It's two three zero. Oh, sorry, I have to uh check reply two three zero. Because we can see that the number of beneficiaries has gone up by one thousand per year. Well, actually, there is a note there. Because right now, the C C S fee scheme was provided by the Lottery's Fund. But after the regularization, the estimated expenditure will fall under the estimates of expenditure here today. So the positive difference is the number provided in the reply. So that is only referring to year twenty twenty-three to twenty-four. How about in twenty twenty-five to twenty-six? Am I correct to understand that the number is smaller because there are other funding? Yes, that is correct. Next, Doctor M N U. I would like to follow up on my own question, reply one four three. In appendix four, you can see that the average utilization rates of aided childcare centers is ninety-nine percent already. You can see that in the past year, it was ninety-seven or ninety-nine, ninety-eight percent. But now, the numbers reached ninety-nine. As we all know, childcare services are very important. Just then, uh, the secretary has said that five percent of the floor area of public housing estate has been reserved for childcare services. I would like to know whether you will set up childcare centers so that uh working parents can leave their children at the childcare centers before they leave work in business areas? Secretary? Of course, that would be ideal, but it would be difficult to secure land. Because for childcare centers, there are fire services requirement. If memory serves, I believe that the buildings cannot exceed twelve meters tall. And in business areas, this building height is very difficult to find. And it cannot be attached to any restaurants as well. It is also a difficult requirement to fulfill. If these fire services requirements can be fulfilled, then of course, we'll try our best to do it. Doctor An? Actually, in many business areas, there are lots of industrial buildings belonging to the Housing Authority that are awaiting development. Can you consider converting them to childcare centers? Don't just default welfare land for NGOs. Is it possible for you to collaborate with the Housing Authority to see if any planning can be done? In the future, P R H development, five percent of the floor area will be reserved for welfare facilities. The S W D can recommend what kind of facilities are to be set up? I'll invite the director to tell us more. Miss Lee? Regarding childcare centers, we'll be adopting a multi-pronged approach. In new P R H estates, we'll reserve five percent of the uh floor area for welfare facilities. And in the future, any government complexes, if there is room, we will also consider those. As for other vacant buildings, if we can acquire them from the market, then we will certainly consider that. No follow-up? Okay, next, Doctor So Chang-Wing. Thank you, Chan. I have been repeating this for a very long time. I hope that the S W D can allocate more resources on grassroots groups or organizations. But after looking through the replies, I remain disappointed. For the one hundred billion dollars, they don't seem to concern us. Under my organization, there are some two hundred and twenty smaller organizations. I hope that one day we can uh see help from the government. But I would like to ask questions regarding zero one four. Firstly, for the Integrated Discharge Support Program for elderly patients that is funded by the Community Care Fund. I find that this program is very helpful for the elderly and this can also alleviate the pressure of the carers. It seemed that in the reply, your focus was on the increased number of beneficiary. This program was implemented in Kowloon East and N T West. Is it possible to expand the scheme to all over Hong Kong? Let's say in Hong Kong Island as well? For the district care teams? These sort of activities have been discussed, but they have not been implemented yet. For the hospital authority and the S W D, you have similar schemes. How do you differentiate your target beneficiaries? And how do you allocate your resources more effectively? Secretary? Thank you, Doctor So, for your question. Your question is very specific. As you can see, we have injected additional resources to the support for elderly persons discharged from public hospitals. In a pilot scheme, we picked a few districts to implement the scheme. This is to complement the uh hospital authorities Integrated Discharge Support Program for elderly patients. This is available in all seven clusters. Through the collaboration of the hospital authorities and other NGOs, they are actually funded by the L W B. There can be more collaboration in the Hong Kong Island cluster. Of course, we are happy for different organizations to help. In the future, when the district care teams are to be implemented, we'll see how they can collaborate. We have heard your view. But not just for the association for the Hong Kong Island. My question is comprehensive. Since you provide similar services, I hope that they will not overlap with each other. I hope that for such meaningful scheme, they can be regularized. That is the project funded by the Community Care Fund. Perhaps I'll explain further. We would like to consolidate our services. We want to consolidate these services into one program. So that is for the Integrated Discharge Support Program for Elderly Patients, I D S P. We want to consolidate the resources so that they can be defaulted to I D S P.
It is to boost the after-school care program. I understand that there was a pilot scheme, but the coverage was limited. And I understand that school management is under the Education Bureau. But after-school care program is the most simple way to boost childcare services. And additional resources will only be limited. I'd like to ask whether the secretary has explored this feasibility with the Education Bureau? Another question, oh three six, asked by Mister Chankin Po. And that is allowance for carers of elderly persons from low-income families. The allowance will be increased from twenty-four hundred to thirty hundred. But for those already under C S S A or other welfare payment, they are not eligible. Doctor Teck held organize a care day, carer's day, and the secretary and his colleagues were present. So there was a case where a disabled person oh was taking care of an elderly person. However, he was not eligible for the allowance because he was receiving D A already. So now, that person, if a person is receiving disability allowance, can he be eligible for at least one-third or one-half of the carer allowance? So that he gets an additional one thousand dollars or so? So can you consider this? Don't flatly refuse application from these persons. Last, oh three two. And that is neighborhood childcare services. Now, in the central and western districts, there are only a few tents. And then Kowloon East much more. I remember the administration mentioning a review of this scheme. I'd like to know whether the review of the N S C C P is complete. Will you provide an allowance for carers? And I'd like to know the progress of the review. All right, three questions. After-school care service for a while or during the past, the Education Bureau and the Labor Welfare Bureau have been discussing. Hopefully, we can achieve some breakthrough. Hopefully, we can cover a large number of schools to provide after-school care for children of working mothers so that uh children can stay after school and their mother can then, their mothers can work. And I believe this is beneficial to the development of children. They can work or play in a good environment. They don't have to be stuck home. And the second question relates to allowance for carers of elderly persons, whether we can adjust the scheme. We have heard a lot of views, but uh we have a lot of considerations. After, we are talking about public money and we don't want to provide double benefits. Usually, if you are receiving one kind of benefits, you cannot get another. We have to stick to the rules. And so, we adopt the same standard in devising the scheme. Someone who is receiving C S S A payment should not be eligible for another kind of allowance. Although I've heard a lot of comments on the current scheme, but we have rules to stick to when it comes to the use of public money. We have to comply with this rule. And the third question is neighborhood childcare services or neighborhood support childcare project. We are conducting a review. It will be completed very soon. Mister Charles Yu Chong, my question is oh five three. Integrated Employment Assistance Program for Self-Reliance. Integrated Employment Assistance Program for Self-Reliance for People Able-Bodied C S S A Age uh below sixty-five, I'd like to know the total number of recipients. This is because we are short of manpower in the community. This is a group of people with productivity. If we can encourage able-bodied C S S A recipients to uh to go into open employment, that is quite a good idea. It is mentioned in the reply that from twenty thirteen to now, there are about hundred and thirty thousand persons who have taken part in this scheme. This is rather a rough figure. You've only told us the total number, the cumulative headcount. What about a breakdown of the participants every year? If you aren't even able to tell us the number of participants per year, how can you monitor the effectiveness of the program? So there are two thousand or twenty thousand or so recipients who have received, who have joined open employment. Can we have a breakdown of the figures? Thirty-six thousand persons, can you provide a breakdown? Tell us those who have secured employment, those who have returned to mainstream schooling. You want to encourage C S S A recipients to return to employment. But I think you haven't been too successful. We talk about twenty percent of the participants. And I don't know the percentage that have secured employment. Will you conduct a full review so that more C S S A recipients can join the workforce? Mister Swan, thank you. Mister Charles' question is very specific. Let's see if the P S can answer some of the questions. Or rather, Director, Miss Li.
Thank you. The first question is the number of unemployed person receiving C S S A in twenty twenty to as at end December, we had about nineteen hundreds, or rather nineteen thousand. What about the third question? I will supply the information after the meeting. You want to encourage able-bodied C S S A recipients to work. I think you haven't been too successful. The limit of twenty-five hundreds hasn't been adjusted for a long time. Will you conduct a full review of all the details of the plan? Thank you. I believe Mister Chow has noticed in twenty nineteen, this S W D conducted a major review of schemes under the C S S A. For instance, the amount of disregarded earnings uh now range from two thousand or to even four thousand dollars. That is, you can work, you can keep part of your earnings, and you can still receive C S S A. We have revised this amount quite substantially just recently. Mister Chow asked whether we can through this self-reliance program to encourage able-bodied C S S A recipients to obtain employment. We will do our utmost to encourage them to do so. Next, Mister Tony Se.
Thank you, Chair. I have got two questions. I'd like to follow up on reply number oh three oh, as well as oh seven oh, asked by Mister Julie Chan and Miss Carmen Khan respectively, or the Mister Ring Kong respectively. The secretary stressed the importance of residential care services for the elderly. Reply oh three oh said that in twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three, in the three years, three hundred and thirty million dollars have been used from the Innovation and Technology Fund for application in elderly and rehabilitation care to employ or to procure about nine thousand one hundred items of technology products to subsidize about one thousand three hundred and sixty elderly and rehabilitation service units. It's important to support rehabilitative service units, but we should also help our elderly persons to age at home. They should stay home for as long as possible. So for the I N T Fund for application in elderly and rehabilitation care, I think the mainland has made much progress in the development of such products. I'd like to know whether the procurement of such products is being done by your bureau or by other bureaus. The reason I ask this is, uh, there is this um movie, Wandering Earth Two. I, in fact, it's not really um science fiction movie. There are many products that can be applied in real-day life. I tried out some of the products. They are useful for both elderly persons and for workers and even firemen can use the products for climbing upstairs. I'd like to know whether you have considered making good use of products available from the mainland.
As for zero seven zero, there were only six applications so far in a span of twenty years. And four of them are still being processed. This figure is not a satisfactory one. In twenty twenty-three to twenty-four, budget enhancement to the scheme were announced. If you think about why this scheme is so unpopular? Secretary, two questions on drone technology. It is my understanding that it is up to the residential care homes to apply for the fund and to procure the technology products required. So if they see where it is necessary, then they can procure their products. They don't have to be from a specific location. Uh, Director, your mic is off. Thank you, Chair. Under this fund, there is a committee consisting of members from the I N T sectors and other professionals. In the assessment committee, they will go through the applications. And we have also commissioned the Hong Kong Council of Social Service to promote the project and to form a reference charts for the relevant organizations. Well, Chair, how about the accreditation? Do applicants have to supply them, or do they have any reference from the committee? Mister Se, I think they understand your question. The question is, do you have a simple mechanism to decide? Would they have a list of reference item? How about second question, zero seven zero? Secretary, do you have any response? P S, please. Miss Lau. Like what Mister Se said. We want to encourage private land developers to include more elderly care services. The original plan has its limits. For each development, only one residential care home can be established. And it cannot form part of the overall G F A. As we all know, land is very valuable in Hong Kong. And land provision is limited. And this has contributed to how private developers are utilizing their property. We understand that the number is not satisfactory. That's why we are undergoing a review. It is about to be concluded, and we hope that very soon we can come back to Lajko to explain in details. Chair can I request a written reply to see what kind of reference list of elderly technology products are we talking about? Yes, the secretary said yes. Thank you. Next, Mister Li Tongkou. My question is two eight four regarding the, two four eight, sorry, regarding the two-dollar scheme. In the reply for question one and four, in twenty twenty-two to twenty-three, the government's reimbursement to the M T R C has an increase of two hundred percent. One point one billion dollar when compared with twenty twenty-one to twenty-two, that is three hundred and sixty-eight million. If we look at the increase during the same period for other operators, the number is not that high. I would like to know whether this number is within your expectation. And in the coming years, what is the expected increase for the M T R C? That's it for now. Secretary, but I would like to invite Commissioner for Transport to answer. Thank you. In twenty twenty-one to twenty-two, the number was the actual figure, and in twenty twenty-two to twenty-three, it is the revised estimate. Your observation is correct. The increase for M T R bus operators and ferry operators have been large, but it is particularly big for the M T R C. It is mainly because we have extended the two-dollar scheme to people aged sixty to sixty-four. And for this group of people, the proportion of them riding the M T R C is relatively higher to those aged sixty-five or above. This of course depends on individuals' travel habits. But for these people aged sixty to sixty-four, perhaps they are working people and they opt for M T R as their mode of transportation. For the two-dollar scheme, for persons aged sixty to sixty-four, it has been implemented for a little over a year. And it still takes time for us to analyze their travel habits. Let's not forget that in the first quarter of twenty twenty-two, it was the height of the fifth wave of the pandemic, and this also affected how people travel. So for the relatively higher amount of increase for the M T R C, we can see that when compared with the franchise bus operators, actually for the revised estimate, they are actually similar. So the amount of revenue reimbursed to the M T R C and franchise bus operators will be comparable. And of course, we have to analyze their travel habits. Mister Li, with my second question, part five of my question. I would like, my question was whether there is any plan to combat the abuse of the scheme and the short rides on long bus route situation. And the administration has given us, given me a one-thousand-word reply, but the reply was only on the first part of my question. As for the second part, it took me great effort to locate the answer. That is the last few words of the last paragraph. That is, in July twenty twenty-two, the government wrote out A P I's to encourage eligible beneficiaries to make appropriate use of short-haul services and section fares to ensure proper use of public funds. That's it. Then the reply goes on. In mid-March twenty twenty-three, the government has launched a new round of publicity programs. I would like to know whether the administration considered the situation serious on short rides on long bus routes. And after the publicity campaign, did you find any improvement to the situation? If not, then why did you continue to roll out a new round of publicity programs? Miss Long. For the publicity campaigns on the short rides on long bus route situation, they will continue. We have heard comments that many people did not realize that the government has suspended extra money if they travel or if they take short rides on longer bus routes. And if we have section fares, then we can, uh, perhaps, well, for the section fares, it involves the overall transport policy. Because with section fares, it may lead to another problem, that is, for people traveling shorter distances, they may actually take longer bus routes. So we have to review this carefully before making any decision. Thank you. Next, with Maggie Chen. I would like to follow up on my question that is zero three eight on elderly services. That is on the voucher scheme. The reply says that you will extend the voucher scheme to all eighteen districts. I would like to know what your timetable is and if other organizations will be able to participate in the scheme. And in your reply, it is said that you will regularize the residential uh community care service voucher for the elderly. In twenty twenty-two to twenty-three, the number is twelve thousand. Is that number relatively low? In your reply, uh, as at October of twenty twenty-two, the number of beneficiary was sixteen hundred, two hundred and eighty-one. So will you adjust the scheme further? That is my first question. Secretary. To regularize the C C S V scheme, the amount will be increased from eight thousand to twelve thousand. It is actually a significant increase, so we need to see whether it is feasible. At this moment, by increasing the number of beneficiaries from eight thousand to twelve thousand, it is actually an increase of fifty percent. So we should focus on how we implement this increase. There are many factors determining whether or not the elderly opt for the uh C C S V scheme. So we need to prioritize by optimizing the increase. My second question is zero zero three and zero forty regarding after-school care program. I was happy to hear that for the after-school care program, there will be good news coming soon. Childcare services are needed, very much needed. For grassroots people, they have to look for childcare services with difficulty. So my question is whether or not you will subsidize more local women's associations? To increase the number of childcare centers in a community? To unleash the working potential of grassroots women? Thank you. Many district organizations, including women's associations, have done a lot in childcare services. In the future, the S W D will enhance childcare services. And if there is room for collaboration, we will of course collaborate with women's association. We are also doing after-school care program at schools. This will also need the participation of social welfare organizations. If there are appropriate women's associations who are familiar with the situation. If it is possible for us to utilize these resources, of course, we will do so. Thank you. I hope that the secretary can let us know more after the meeting or have more liaison with us. Because for grassroots women. They have been working hard. Lastly, zero three nine. On the neighborhood support childcare project. There has been increasing demand for this project and it is a popular project. So I wonder if you would allocate additional resources? So that people can uh secure childcare services in their own district. We are currently reviewing the mode and the effectiveness of the project. We have taken in lots of views from the local community, hopefully we can improve this project further. Next, Mister Gary Dunn. I would like to follow up on reply one two nine, question from Mister Lee Siweng and question two four eight. On one two nine. The money was allocated to purchase around one hundred and twenty premises to provide around one hundred and sixty welfare facilities. I would like to know what is their progress? And how are they going to be distributed? Is it based on district population, et cetera? Second question on two uh four eight regarding the two dollar scheme. Another current mechanism, if there are delays or incidents in the M T R C service, they will have to provide concession on certain days as compensation. I would like to know if you have thought about the reimbursement on these concessions? The M T R C is actually being penalized to provide concessions because of the delayed or incidents. But on the other hand, the government has to reimburse them. So I would like to know what is the logic behind that?
Mister Xun, can you take the first question and then Commissioner Law will take the second question? Yes, let's see if the director has anything to supplement after me. We want to make good use of the twenty billion dollars. But after several years of practice, of practical experience, you will see that it's not easy to procure facilities, whether the money should be spent on elderly services or on childcare services. Now, for elderly persons, we, the demand for uh barrier-free access is high. There are uh in the urban areas, some buildings are too old and for suitable buildings, they are too expensive. I cannot devout the uh negotiations carrying on, so forgive me for not disclosing some projects we are handling. So do you need any supplement from uh Miss Lee? Not really. All right, Miss Law.
Thank you for your question. Honestly speaking, the Transport Department has not considered the uh penalty program you mentioned just now. And for Thanksgiving Day of the M T R, now we are only providing fair concession, not free rides. Those who are eligible for the two dollar scheme will continue to pay two dollars. There is no extra concession for ordinary members of the public if they can benefit. Well, the government have to pay much more under the two dollar scheme as a result of the Thanksgiving Days. We will have to do some calculations. The incentive may not be too high for the two dollar scheme beneficiaries compared to those not eligible. And the day when the concession is given will not be fixed. It may be just one or two days in a year. Whether we have a special mechanism to tackle that, we haven't think about, haven't thought about that yet. We will do so later. Miss Zhang, all right, let me clarify. If you provide uh because under the uh fifty percent discount concessionary day, then uh elders only pay one dollar. If as a result, more elderly persons are attracted to ride the M T R because the subsidy is going to be paid by the government, that means the government has to pay more. Is it really reasonable? Is logical? So the M T R C L would like to give a rebate to passengers. And as a result, the government has to subsidize more. This sounds rather illogical. Any supplement from Miss Law? Thank you, Miss Zhang, for raising this point. We will have to check our figures to see whether as a result of the concessionary day, the government has to pay more subsidies. If the case is indeed uh so, then we will see what we can do. Yes, please do so.
Mister Ring Kong, thank you. I've got three questions. The first is oh seven one, and that is uh allowance for carers of elderly persons from low-income families. According to the reply, they do not have any statistics on the number of such carers we have. So will you conduct an initial survey of the population of such carers so that your assistance can be more targeted? The reply says that a special hotline will be set up. People have complained very often that it's difficult to get through when it comes to calling hotlines. Given that this hotline is going to be rather important, I'd like to know the number of lines available and the manpower devoted to this service so that you can meet your indicators. And you are going to set up a hotline to support carers. Some government departments have similar hotlines as well. I'd like to know how there can be synergy among different departments to avoid duplication of resources. Also on the point of uh carers. In answer E, it is said that S W D will launch a three-year publicity campaign starting from twenty twenty three, twenty four. Can you be more specific? As to the content of the campaign, what is the purpose of the publicity campaign? Uh another question relates to oh seven six. That is the I N T Fund for Application in Elderly and Rehabilitation Care. According to the reply, the applicants are usually from rehabilitation units. Would you consider accepting applications from individuals? And as for products acquired or hired by these organizations, will you conduct a survey so that we know what products are more useful? And the last question relates to reply oh six eight, and that is the improvement of home care services. The cost per case per month is nine thousand nine hundred and fifty, close to ten thousand. I'd like to know how come it's so expensive? It costs you about five thousand dollars to hire a foreign domestic helper. If we are spending nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars on um home care service, isn't it a bit too expensive? Yes, three questions. Secretary, I have a girl and the director can help where appropriate. We do not have comprehensive data on carers yet, but as we proceed, let's see if we can acquire more information and we can share with members. At this moment, we don't have any. The hotline, we are pressing ahead of full steam and let's see if the director has got anything to add. Well, it cannot be a hotline with unlimited capacity. We can only set up hotline based on resources available. It's true that there are different hotlines available in the community. I hope they will continue to operate. If uh we can collaborate. We will do so. As regards the I N T Fund for Application in Elderly and Rehabilitation Care. The application is unit-based. For individuals, we have the Community Care Voucher Scheme and uh you can have up to eight thousand dollars for procurement of products and also hiring of um equipment that you need. And then you're talking about uh improving uh home care for the elderly persons. We are talking about the frail elders, uh frail cases, and we are talking about professionals coming to, going to their homes to help. Can you publish the types of products bought under the I N T Fund? Now for publicity, we have got a three-year plan. Starting from around the third or fourth quarter of this year, we will launch the campaign. We want the community to better understand the needs of carers, and we will also publicize our designated hotline. We will start to invite interested organizations to submit proposals very soon. As I said, the hotline is an important one. It will be operated around the clock and we hope calls can be taken as soon as possible. Usually, people call when the situation is urgent and we may even cover outreach services. For I N T Fund products for gerontology, well, there are different types. There can be multifunction beds and bed mattresses and also uh walking aids, et cetera.
Miss Kaminkan, thank you, Chair. My question also relates to elderly care. Reply number one oh four and forty three. One oh four is a question by Mister Edward Lo. And that is uh places available in different types of elderly care homes. And in the reply, the secretary told us about elderly residential care services in Guangdong. I'd like to ensure that resources are well utilized. There are hundred and forty-two elders living in the two R C H's in Guangdong. Perhaps uh that was because of the closed borders, but now we have resumed normal travel with the mainland. And then we have a table telling us the average waiting time is, can be up to eighteen months. And uh in the footnote, we see uh number of uh cases not included. So should the waiting time really be that long? I'd like to ask whether there will be a task force to discuss with Guangdong on provision of elderly services. For instance, can we extend our board place scheme to cover R C H's in the mainland? Now we have one in Chaqing, which uh takes about four to five years, uh five, four to five hours to travel to. And with the uh X L L, maybe one hour we do is quite convenient for family members to visit those elders. Would there be a task force to discuss with the Guangdong authorities? And even before that, can there be visits to R C H's in Guangdong to assess whether they are qualified? You don't really necessarily have to cooperate with N G O's. In the reply, I can see that the government is managing quite a number of N G O's. Now if it is uh for the boards of N G O's to decide whether they want to operate R C H's in Guangdong. Then the supply will never catch up with demand. If we have more abundant supply, they will help us to address the huge demand for such places. At Easter, I visited R C H's in the mainland. I think many of them are even better than those um in Hong Kong. Thank you, Mister Xun. Thank you. I believe with uh the opening of our borders, I believe more elders would be willing to take up places in the R C H's in Guangdong and Chaqing. So long as an N G O has experience in running R C H's, they are eligible for our subsidy. When it comes to cooperation with the G P A, not long ago, the Shenzhen municipality delegation visited Hong Kong. I have discussed with them how we can um interface better by means of a task force. Apart from residential care services, they provide quality elderly services in the mainland. In the coming week, I'm going to lead the delegation to see many residential care homes, not just in Guangzhou, but Shenzhen, Zhongshan as well. With normal travel between Hong Kong and mainland resumed, normalcy, we will make good use of this opportunities. We will relax some of the restrictions in Hong Kong and we will take the initiative to contact authorities in Shenzhen and Guangdong to understand more the situation. Hopefully, we can make some breakthrough. I welcome this response. You mentioned relaxing some of the restrictions. This is important. The operator need not necessarily have experience in operating R C H's in Hong Kong. It can be an Hong Kong operator operating in the mainland. It depends on how we set the standards to make these people qualified. A simple response. We require the organization to have operation experience in Hong Kong. It need not necessarily be an N G O. It can be other than an N G O, but it must have operation experience in Hong Kong.
Next, Miss Lillian Kwok. Thank you. I would like to have some follow-up questions regarding zero one one and zero one two. You can see that from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty three, there was an increase of thirteen percent in the expenditure. This reflects a very high This reflects a very high demand for the residential childcare services. It is my understanding that there has been a very high demand for emergency places, especially for women's shelter. It is also my understanding that for the school, for social development, the number of places have been adjusted. I've been in touch with frontline workers for these schools. Would the S W D consider relaxing the restriction for places in these schools as emergency places? Second, on question one five five and one six four, I have a question regarding the provisions. In your reply, it is mentioned that you have no information or no statistics regarding staff salary. But they have to submit annual reports to you, right? So I find it very worrisome that you have no information on the employees' and salary expenses. How can you monitor their work and see whether their expenditure is reasonable or not? Third question on one nine two. Daycare centers for the elderly. Before the pandemic, there were daycare centers for the elderly as well, but the utilization was very low at about fifty percent. Since now the pandemic has subsided, we have heard that the demand for these places have increased. So I would like to know whether you have any strategies in place so that they can be better utilized and resources will not go to waste. Fourth question, two one three, regarding navigation scheme for young persons in care services. Information showed that you have admitted nine hundred and ninety-six trainees and four hundred and thirty-five have dropped out. That means the dropout rate is forty-three percent. Of course, I understand that there are various reasons. But for these trainees who are admitted, of course, I would think that they would like to complete the program. So I would like to hear your thoughts on this. How are we going to fill the gap in manpower shortage? We all hope that resources can be utilized well. Thank you. Four questions. Please try to be succinct. Perhaps I'll invite the director to answer questions regarding zero one one and zero one two. For for schools for so, schools for social development, there may be some vacant places. Actually, in the second phase of our review of the residential childcare and related services, we have touched upon this issue. We have been in touch with these schools and the places do not have to be directly linked with the school places. And second, on daycare services, we understand that there is a big demand maybe due to the ease of information flow. So in the future, on the one-stop platform for carers, we will provide uh information on places of daycare services or day respite care services. As for the lump sum grant, it is to give the flexibility to organizations to decide how many employees to hire. We believe that we should leave this flexibility to them. As for the navigation scheme for youth, we try our best to attract young people to join our scheme. But if they want to withdraw from the scheme, we cannot force them to stay. But it is a fact that young people in Hong Kong do not have much interest in this industry. But of course, we hope that we can introduce more new blood. But I can see that we have three more members wishing to speak for the first round and two more members wishing to speak for the second round. But if there were no other questions, I need to draw the line here. For the second round, we will see how much time we have left. Mister Chu Kao Kang, I would like to ask questions regarding reply zero six two. In the government's reply, they do not have plans to establish the post of a liaison officer. The ratio of the teacher-to-pupil ratio is actually one to eleven. The number of students with special education needs is on the rise, especially for students with disruptive behavior. If there are students with disruptive behavior, teachers would need to deploy additional manpower to handle these students. Many principals now have to join teachers in the classroom as well. For non-Chinese-speaking students, uh the subsidy amount is at several hundred, several tens of thousands of dollars. So why are we saving on students with special education needs? There are not enough manpower to take care of their needs. We need a dedicated professional to devise support scheme for these students. We need to enhance the teacher-to-pupil ratio. During the kindergarten period, it is actually the golden opportunity to help students with S E N. When are we going to improve the teacher-to-pupil ratio? Thank you. We have consulted the E D B in compiling this reply. For preschool students, under L W D, we have mainly two services. That is the tier-one support services and the onsite preschool rehabilitation services. They have been quite helpful to students. And the reply from the E D B is that they do not have plans to set up a liaison officer for the integrated education or inclusive education coordinator. But Chair, I would like to stress that the policy in this regard is very lacking. So I would like the administration to follow up on this. Next, Mister Su Ka-Fai. I would like to follow up on zero five four. Regarding childcare services, at N X two, aided standalone childcare centers and aided childcare centers attached to kindergartens. Actually, what are these two types of centers for? I will invite director to respond. But for aided standalone C C Cs, they are under the S W D. As for aided C C Cs attached to kindergartens, they are provided by the E D B. So these are for kindergarteners or additional childcare services. But they are for younger children, pre-kindergarten. So are we talking about nursery students? Are they childcare services? Well, not in that sense. How about N X one? Number of centers of A S C P in various districts. Eighteen districts are listed here and from twenty twenty to twenty-one, twenty twenty-one to twenty-two, and twenty twenty-two to twenty-three in twenty twenty-three across the eighteen districts. We can see the number did not reach maximum capacity. The percentage was eighty-four percent. Uh, from twenty twenty-one to twenty-two, that is sixty-three, and the year before that, sixty-four percent. If the number of places are not filled to the full, where will the resources go? And lately, there has been discussion on unleashing the working potential of women. I wonder why these places are not used to their full capacity, Secretary. Well, I would like to point out that it is very difficult to reach one hundred percent utilization rate because of the time slot issue. As you can see, for after-school childcare, the utilization rate is quite high, but can they be utilized further? Of course, we can. Director. Deputy Director. But for these standalone C C Cs, the utilization rate is higher. But for C C C attached to kindergarten, the utili- utilization rate is lower. Some parents require full-day childcare services. In the coming three years, in eight districts, we'll be increasing seven hundred standalone C C Cs. This will increase the supply of places by seventy-eight percent. So depending on the demand of the parents and the mode of the demand, we'll continue to step up supply. For the service places, from twenty twenty-one to twenty-two, the number of places is uh five thousand nine hundred seventeen, but number of student beneficiaries was three thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven, so that is only sixty-three percent utilization. So I would like to know where will the leftover resources go? Deputy Director, please switch on his mic, please. Deputy Director Wong. Yes, please. For the resources, we need to look at the teacher-to-pupil ratio before deciding the actual amount of subsidy given. For childcare centers, some of the costs are covered by the tuition paid by parents and some is subsidized by the government. So we need to keep an eye on the operational cost to ensure that they have the uh income sources. If there are not enough students, then the number of teachers will decrease as well. So Chair, to put it simply, that means there are redundant or leftover resources. Is that correct? I think what Mister Su is suggesting is that the government has set aside uh a certain amount of resources, but they were not used. Is that correct? But we estimate that there will be this number of students, but if they are under enrolled, then the school place will not be there, so the government resources will not be wasted. So that means the resources for teachers will not be wasted, right? Yes, because the number of teachers hired will depend on the number of students enrolled. Thank you. Next, Miss Judy Chan. Thank you. Well, I would like to follow up on the reply just discussed. Since the resources were not fully utilized, then how come there will be an additional seven hundred places across eight districts? And in different districts, are there different demands? Do we keep a statistics on that? And on occasional childcare services, I understand that uh for elderly respite care, some carers have to take care of the elderly people twenty-four seven. Even with emergency, they have to look for uh emergency care. It was very difficult for them to find. But if we look at the numbers, the utili- utilization rate is not that high. So I would like to know whether there is an uneven distribution of demand or is the solution not targeted enough?
Chair, the first question from Miss Judy Chan about uh C C Cs. We talked about another seven hundred places, uh that is standalone aided C C Cs, which are very popular. The utilization rate is now up to ninety-seven percent. Rather, for uh aided C C Cs attached to cages, they are not as popular. So we are talking about adding places to aided standalone C C Cs. And as for the utilization rate of respite care places, yes, we all say that there is a great demand for respite care services. But when we look at the actual usage, it's not that high. So we have to work on that, whether there is a mismatch in information or is it because a mismatch in the uh provision and supply in different districts? Or is it because of traffic arrangements? There may be deep-seated reasons. We will see how we can adjust service to help users. Do we have statistics to tell where the demand is higher or lower in what districts? Director, we will check if we have such data and analysis. Miss Chan, perhaps I can give you a response later. Three members would like to have a second round. Due to time constraint, each will have three minutes. Mister Chow Siu Chong, Miss Lillian Quak and Mister Shu Ka-Fai, Mister Chow Siu Chong. Thank you, Chair. I'd like to follow up on reply O three five. It is sent a reply that in June, there will be a special scheme for importation of carers for residential care homes. We asked for information on the number of carers working in different R C Hs. However, such information is not available from the government. Now, up to seven thousand care workers can be imported into Hong Kong to work in residential care homes. I don't know whether my calculation is correct. We have about ten thousand local care workers working in different R C Hs. My concern is if you are importing seven thousand care workers to Hong Kong, will that impact on the work opportunities of the ten thousand local workers in Hong Kong? And will there be any disincentive for employers to raise the income or the salary of local care workers? I ask the administration to keep the relevant statistics so that we can check the uh number of local workers still working in the trade and also the change in their salaries. P S, thank you. Mister Chow asked about the ratio of local and imported care workers. I can share with you some information I have now. Mister Chow is very correct. We have about eleven thousand eight hundred local care workers. We have four thousand odd imported care workers. Under the special scheme to start in June, uh the cap is seven thousand, including those who are already in Hong Kong, the four thousand odd already in Hong Kong. So uh the net number will be three thousand, less than three thousand. Looking ahead, this is how we do the calculation. When we decided on imposing a cap of seven thousand, When we decided on imposing a cap of seven thousand, we took into full account the job prospects for local care workers. We expect that in the coming three years, we need an additional forty-five hundred care workers in Hong Kong. We have four thousand odd already imported and working in Hong Kong. We can import another up to three thousand. That means we have seven thousand five hundred workers that have to be filled or vacancies that will be filled by local workers. So uh Mister Chow doesn't have to worry about the job prospects and pay of local care workers. Can you compile statistics on the number of local care workers and their change in pay for the coming three years? Mister Chow, hope that you can maintain detailed information so that they know whether there is sufficient job opportunities for local workers. Yes, we will maintain such statistics as far as possible because it is also important on the way forward of the special scheme. Miss Lillian Kwak, thank you, Chair. Mister Chow raised a point. I wonder why in many of the replies, information sought was not available. Uh, my question relates to one five five and one six four. I understand that you need to provide flexibility for NGOs to offer different services. Still, you should audit. I I'm sure they will finish audited financial reports to you. The government should have received such reports with the information we asked for. But then you told us here that you haven't got statistics in this regard. This is worrying. If you indeed do not have such information, you have to work harder. Question one three two. Now, there are different reasons you should not just let it be. You should find out the reasons for that to ensure that we can have the right number. Do you have any plans to tackle that problem? And other question is number oh oh five, and that is um the um employment matching and work orientation and placement scheme for persons with the same with disabilities. I'd like to know whether uh the persons hired have been rising or do you plan to improve or increase the ceiling of the allowances? Now, the first is on the lump sum grant subvention. We want to allow more flexibility for NGOs to deploy resources. As regards information sought by members, let's see if we can do so. If we have information submitted to us by the sector, we'll try to provide such information to members. And as for the navigation scheme. I'm sure members understand that uh some of the trainees would want to go for better career prospects. Now, I think we should encourage our young people to go further. And of course, we will have fewer nurses as a result. But we will try to attract as many young people to join this sector as far as possible. As regards the number of persons with disabilities employed by the government, I don't think I have such information with me. We have to check with the Secretary for Civil Service. Yes, please supply the information afterwards. The last question for this session, Mister Shu Ka-Fai. Uh, my question is number oh five four. I asked a question about the aided standalone C C Cs and also uh aided C C Cs attached to K Gs. Well, the utilization rate was ninety-seven percent in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. But then for aided C C Cs attached to K Gs, the utilization was only fifty odd percent. Again, ninety-eight percent for aided standalone C C S for those attached to K Gs is low. And then in between April and twelve last year, for uh aided standalone over ninety percent again and still fifty percent for those attached to K Gs. Given that there is this big discrepancy, when are you going to adjust the provision? And if we had not raised this point, were you going to adjust the provision as well? We do notice that. And therefore, we're going to increase the number of places under aided standalone C C Cs because of the keen demand for such. But it's not easy to identify the right location for providing the service. Mister Shu. In N X one. Uh, that is on A S C Ps in various districts. In the three years from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two, as I said. The utilization rate was sixty-four, sixty-three and eighty-four percent respectively. In Yaochimong. In twenty twenty, surface number of places, hundred and fifty, number of beneficiaries, hundred and twenty. In twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, you provided hundred and thirty-seven places, but only forty-four students ben- benefited. I'd like to know the reason why. And then as an end, December twenty twenty-two, hundred and thirty-four places in Yaochimong. A number of beneficiaries, one three three. I'd like to know the fluct- the reason for that fluctuation. Well, that is because in twenty twenty, twenty-one, uh we were affected by COVID nineteen. Many C C Cs stopped operation altogether. So there are a lot of interfering factors during the past couple of years. All right, that ends the session. The next session will start at four forty. Thank you very much, Mister Sun and your colleagues for attending this session.